You probably should announce who canceled it. I think you had Caruso on.
Yeah, when I come, I'll just go down the list and when I, I'll mention it. I don't think we're gonna see Grove and Auto. Okay, I'd like to, uh, I need a motion to open the meeting at seven thirty-four.
So motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, vote is unanimous. I wanted to, second thing I want to approve the minutes of May third, two thousand and sixteen, and May seventeenth of two thousand and sixteen. Need a motion and a second?
So motion, second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, vote's unanimous. And third thing, I want to approve a bill of two hundred and twenty-five dollars for Amy Bedard typing the minutes. Need a motion or a second?
So motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, vote's unanimous. Okay, Woody, you were up first, the Petraska's single lot subdivision on seven star road.
I got, I have, I read.
Let's see, have the original memorandum of decision which Bob has in his hands?
Okay. Yeah, walk through it, be in line. But he don't have to sign.
He didn't vote.
He didn't vote.
Included all of the items that you had requested at the public hearing, including the covenant to remain on the property that there be no further lots created and that the right-of-way never be petitioned to the town for acceptance of the town road. We made the changes to the drawing of the swale of the driveway coming in. Add the grass swale on the right-hand side and roof rap energy dissipated before it goes into the wetlands. And that's why the plans indicated they were amended on much, revised on March twenty-third. So the procedure from here would be the discussion of the memorandum of decision, the vote on memorandum of decision. Once it's signed by the board, we'll file it with the town clerk and then the twenty-day appeal period. Once twenty-day appeal period is signed by the town clerk, I can bring back the mileage for signature for the plan, on the plan. Okay, any questions?
We need to vote.
Yes.
No, no question.
Okay, and there's a list of waivers as well. Uh, I'm, I'm just gonna enumerate them.
Sure.
Section three point four, point two, point three. Section three point four, point two, point six. Section three point four, two, point two, point seven. Section three point four, point two, point eight. Section three point four, point two, point twelve. Section three point four, point two, point fourteen. Section three point four, point two, point seventeen. Section three point four, point two, point eighteen. Section three point four, point two, point nineteen. Section three point four, point two, point twenty. Section three point four, point two, point twenty-one. Section three point four, point two, point twenty-two. Section three point four, point two, point twenty-four.
And just for reification, those are standards that way that apply to a public roadway for multiple lots. Whereas this is a single lot, it's actually considered a driveway. Some of those waivers were public.
Is the board have any questions?
No.
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 Okay, are there any people here butters or anything in the audience? Okay, do you have any questions, sir?
I look at the, uh, redrawing of the driveway.
Did you sign in tonight?
Uh, no, I will.
If anybody hasn't signed in, please sign in.
Grass swale those add was coming down through here and energy's dissipating on the wetlands.
Currently this, the way the land is today, this goes uphill here.
Mm-hmm. It's not going down.
The intention is then to cut it down to let it flow that way.
That's good.
And this is lower. This point here is lower than this point, uh, today.
That's good.
Before you cut it in. So by lowering this, you kind of need this.
That's correct.
Okay.
Low point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any more questions at this point? Is the board ready to vote the memorandum?
Yes, I'm ready to own and.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion and a second to assign the memorandum of decision dated June seventh, two thousand and sixteen for the one-lot subdivision off seven star road.
Do you wanna do that first or the waivers, finish the waivers, vote on?
Okay. All right, everybody wanna vote the waivers first then?
Yeah, we should. Nine of them.
Uh, there's a few. Eight, four, eight.
Thirteen.
Twelve, thirteen.
Whatever. Thirteen, five. Make a motion to accept the thirteen waivers listed.
Three through twenty-five.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Um, we're ready to vote to sign the memorandum of decision?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the memorandum of decision. And it's, what's the address again? Henrietta Petroskis. Map nineteen lot twenty-three.
Map nineteen lot twenty-three?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, aye, unanimous. Okay. I'm gonna sign a second one too, so we have something for the file.
Yeah, normally, we need three of them. She'll post one on the board and the way she wants to keep one in the desk. Oh, thank you.
You wanna?
Can we follow?
Yeah. I think one of them, I got them, I'm gonna hang one of one. I said I want them.
She'd like to have two and we keep one.
Okay. She needs to make copies, that's fine, you know, I'm not gonna. She's gonna, uh, stamp it as well.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Woody. Okay, I'm just gonna call out a couple of things here that I know nobody's here, but we'll go through it. Uh, let's see, that's, that's one, all right. Okay, one ninety-four Main Street, we did receive a email stating that they weren't ready yet, so with their paperwork, so they're not gonna be here tonight, so. Well, so we just keep this thing rolling, we haven't heard from them yet, it's nine twenty-nine, nine thirty-one, mains Salem Street. It's a new location for Grove and Auto. Also not here tonight. We haven't received anything, uh, by email or by phone call.
Both of those were sent the site plan review forms, I sent them to them.
Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna get this one out of the way because, I mean, this thing's been lingering, lingering, lingering. This is Whitestone Village two. Uh, there's a performance bond held by Salem Five for forty thousand dollars since two thousand and eight. And, uh, all the items that were remaining have been met, that were on the punch list. The only thing was the situation of entering on Georgia Street, which I'm not supposed to do. Have you talked to Whitestone?
Yeah, I talked to Whitestone and got a meeting set up with them, they dodged two of them so far, but, um, but it's not gonna affect that bond.
Okay. So is everybody ready to, you know, release the bond? Okay, I need a motion to release the bond.
On my.
For forty thousand. Need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right. Well, we're at the situation of Mr. Eric Held here tonight.
He sent an email saying he didn't know, it just, I just got it like ten minutes ago.
He what?
Just got, sent an email. Said he wasn't informed of the meeting time, so he's unfortunately not able to make the meeting. Uh, he wants an opportunity to speak at a later rescheduled meeting.
Uh, I'm not gonna keep going on down this road, I, I mean, it's, you know, this, this has been posted for some time now.
I'm pretty sure he was CC'd. I'll look at my, uh, mail on my computer and see, but I'm pretty sure he was notified.
We, we told him that the, we, the last, well, the meeting he walked in on, that it had to be the seventh of June.
Yep. You want in the next meeting?
Can we, can we address some of the issues, um, related to, um, the fairways?
Yes.
Since it's on the agenda and since I left another meeting to come here because this is what Mr. Held wanted?
I know.
Uh, can
Yeah.
We can address hers.
Actually.
Not his.
Yeah, I actually, um, some of the information I have, I think may be helpful to, you're the owner of Lot eight, right? At the end of the entrance, yeah.
Yeah, it's really just four kind of simple questions, just trying to figure out timing and whose responsibility.
And I'm gonna, I was gonna give an update, so that might be helpful and then maybe the board can have a conversation about it.
Okay. Sure.
So you can know what everything's going on.
Yeah, that's great.
So we, for the record, at least, I mean, uh, Latman Babrowski meeting Tallerman on behalf of, uh, um, Grove and Fairways. So the board received a letter, um, Peter Williams, the peer review engineer, went out on December twenty-ninth to review the subdivision and the as-built plans, and he provided a whole list of items that had yet to be completed. Um, and as of this date, everything but a couple of items are done. A number of them got taken care of in the last week. Um, and there are two items in particular that we would like to talk about. One is the grass at the entrance. Um, and the, um, the applicant developer, um, has his landscaper out there, started working on it today. They're gonna rehydrate seed that, um, and then they're gonna come back and water, I think, over the next three weeks. Um, is what I in-informed. Uh, and so that's one issue. Um, one issue related to that is that the development now has been turned over from an association point of view, not, obviously, it hasn't been accepted by the planning board, but from an association point of view, the developer now owns nothing of the properties. And so the association is supposed to start taking care of the entrance and the cul-de-sac. Um, so the circle and the cul-de-sac is not also not finished. Um, but so there's some questions we have for the board on that. The, um, the, there's this, an area of mulch, an area of grass, and a tree or two, and some bushes. And, um, the request was that the grass be removed so it doesn't have to be watered and maintained, but that there be additional mulch and additional bushes planted. Um, we are informed by the DPW that they don't want more trees because of a site distance, a sight line issue. So we're happy to do that, happy to plant more bushes, uh, happy to, uh, not have grass and increase the mulch so that it doesn't have to be maintained, mowed, and.
Who made the request?
Who made what request?
To give rid of the grass?
I'm under, I understand that some of the neighbors, the lot owners, made the request.
I, I don't think, do you want me to respond?
Yes, I want to.
I don't know how these meetings work. I didn't even wanna come, but I was the representative sent to come.
Yeah, there you go.
Um.
Let me just, uh, about the hydro seeding.
Yeah.
She brought up a good point, and it is in our rules and regulations on when we can plant grass.
Yeah.
And we're in a period now that we shouldn't be planting. And I, I don't, I didn't memorize the exact date, but it's either the first part of November is the best time to hydro seed it. And it's too hot right now. It's in our rules and regs, I'll get the exact dates.
Okay, so I think that might have been.
It was prior seeded, so this is.
Yeah, this is a new, it was already done.
So this is, but these were where, sort of where my questions come up, so I'll just try to be as, as quick. So I, thinking that the homeowners association, I think that's the right term for it,
Yes.
had already, like, taken the development over.
Correct.
We had got some quotes for, you know, planting new grass, we're trying to find low-maintenance ways to maintain the entrance especially. Um, and so then, when we were talking about surveying and stuff, we were told that the town hadn't adopted the road. I don't know if that's the right term.
Yep.
And so I was like, oh, I wonder, you know, does that affect the homeownership association? Um, so that was one question, and we weren't sure who to ask, so I actually asked Denise, and Denise suggested that I send Mr. Freer, if I pronounce that right, an email, which I did. Um, with basically just a couple of questions, and saying that it was, grass was planted in the entrance, um, and I think on the sidewalks and the island, but it was done at a time, maybe even July of last year, where there was no way that it was gonna grow. Um, if you drive down the development and you look at the nice patches of land on the sidewalks, you know, between the, the road and the sidewalk, it's nice because a lot of us paid money to reseed, um, our grass, to have it come up nice, because when it was planted, or at least I can only speak for Lot eight, when it was planted, there was no way that it was gonna grow. We wanted it to look nice, so it does. Well, it kinda does. But anyway, so when you come into the entrance now and when you get to the island, it's all weeds, and I think not surprisingly, because it was planted at a bad time. So what we're saying is the homeownership association is happy to take it over, but we thought that it should be up at least to a certain par for us to take it over. So, but the request, when I sent the request, it was all as questions, never saying that I wanted anything removed or that we wanted anything planted. It was really just, can it be done to get it to a certain standard so that we can then maintain it? Can it be done in a low-maintenance way?
Okay.
Um, and then the very next thing I know is George was there, you know, checking it out, and I just got an email from, like, the warranty woman that he works with saying, oh, we're gonna come in and we'll do new grass and we'll do new plantings, and I was like, that's great. And she did ask my opinion, not the homeowner's opinion, um, not the association opinion, of what I thought would be low maintenance in the island.
Oh, so maybe that's what he was referring to.
My, and my answer was, whatever you guys wanna do that at least gets it up to a certain standard and then is low maintenance, I'm all for. If it's mulch, then it's mulch.
So, well, but I think that, um, we're willing, the applicants are willing to pan, plant more bushes in there too. I don't think you want a whole island of mulch.
No, because then it turns into weeds and then you still need a grass, in my opinion, because I maintain a cul-de-sac and have for over twenty years. Um, you need a grass strip in there and then your internal circle with your, with your mulch and, which has to be retreated and.
So I think we're happy to work with anybody or whoever for how to get it up to a certain standard. It's really just that I think it was planted at a time when it was never gonna grow the way that it should have.
Well, the grass, in, in my opinion, on that subdivision's been horrible in a couple of spots. We, have we addressed the other lot? Yeah?
What other lot?
That last one they were holding that money for?
I just.
It's, you got, you got most of the lots in there, we got very good grass growing.
Yeah.
You got one in there, you got one in there. It, it's, it's pretty bad, I can tell you right now, because they're not maintaining, they're not doing anything.
Yeah. Boy, that's, is that an address?
I don't know the answer to that.
That's up to them, because I can tell you, you've still gotta water grass, and they're not doing it.
So I, I'm, I'm prepared to address the entrance and the cul-de-sac, so i-if you don't wanna, I don't know whether the grass was planted today or not, we're trying to find out, so.
It wasn't.
It wasn't in front?
No.
Okay, so.
Which, actually, can I just ask this one other question before you answer? Because they did remove the, whatever you call it, the weeds or like that top layer, but it was only on a very thin section. So my other question was, can it be reseeded or, but for the wider sections?
The whole area?
So that then when we maintain it, it's at least, again, starting from
September.
That's sweet, thanks.
Go ahead.
What?
No, go, no, I'm sorry, I didn't.
How was it?
So, um, here's my suggestion. So the, I think it's important, we'd like to know, generally speaking, if it's okay that the applicant doesn't plant all the trees that were there because the, apparently there's a site issue. But plants more bushes and reduces the grass. Now, while you're saying you want some grass, there's some preference to have no grass. The applicant's willing to plant more bushes and increase the size of the mulch. If the board would tell me what they would approve, and then we go to the homeowners association, then we can have a plan.
What was in the landscape plan?
The landscape plan adds, I don't have it in front, but the landscape plan adds more trees in the island.
Okay.
And also adds, it's, it's got a grass strip, mulch, bushes, and more trees.
We got a request from the highway commissioner asking for less trees and just low-growing bushes.
Low, low bushes.
We, we really, we really, me and Bob have talked about this for a while. We know we gotta change this in the subdivision rules and regs because you can't see through some of those things.
Yeah.
And the, the way people are driving in this town now, I mean, they're, they're all exceeding its speed limit by twice as much. And you come around some of these cul-de-sacs, there could be a kid sitting there in the middle of the road. So I, in my estimation, the lower the bushes and everything, no trees, the better it's gonna be.
We're gonna leave the tree that, there's at least one tree there, so we'll leave the tree or trees that are there.
One of the things that Bobby did in one subdivision, he cut it up a ways.
Yeah.
So that you could see.
Yeah, because you can see under the canopy.
Yes.
Right, but then, so lower bushes planted. Grass, no grass.
If you go with just the bark mulch and no grass, you need to put the fabric down underneath so the weeds don't grow.
And they still grow.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna be maintaining it.
Again, I didn't really have a preference. My thing was, let's just get it to a place where it's easy to maintain, not having lived in a cul-de-sac before.
It's a very small, that, that's a small.
I don't know what that is.
Yeah, it's.
I don't, I don't know.
That one's a small one, so it's, it's, uh, it's not very large.
Sometimes one person takes the whole thing over.
Yeah, that's what I did.
But the reality is sometimes nobody does anything.
Well, right, and I don't live by the island, so that's where, that's why I'm more concerned about the entrance.
Get to cut the grass out front.
I'm gonna have to cut the grass out front, because you're, that's yours. That's, which I don't mind doing as long as it's grass and not what it is.
If it's all mulch, not all mulch, but if there's a circle of mulch, must have the fabric, more bushes, make sure the canopy of the tree is up so you can see through it.
Yes.
Don't have to plant more trees. That's the island.
And a grass, you gotta have a grass strip.
You wanna add the grass strip.
Well, how big is it now, do you know? Is it five feet, ten feet?
I don't know.
That cul-de-sac is tiny, can't be, right?
I'm gonna guess five or six feet maybe.
Yeah, so that's.
All right, keep small.
Grass strip.
Because that's where the snow's gonna go. It's gonna dump on that.
And it'll die and.
No, it doesn't, usually it doesn't.
Um, okay, so we're good with that, so back to the entrance. So apparently it was planted last time in September. It hasn't been hydro seeded yet, you said that. So the question is.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I disagree with the September, because I remember it was very, very hot in, in the summertime.
Okay.
And we were sitting on our porch like, that's never gonna grow, why are they even doing that?
All right, so regardless, it needs to be redone, is, right, so.
That would be my desire.
But you don't wanna, you wanna plant it in accordance with the regs.
I think we should, and it would have a better chance to attach and grow.
Okay. So it's gonna be delayed.
But we don't know what the regs are, is that right?
I'll look, I'll look and see.
I haven't got my book with me.
I'll look and see when they are, we'll plant it in, as soon, let's say it's not right now, and it doesn't start until November one, we'll plant it November one. If it starts September one, we'll plant it September one. Whatever it says, if this is, if it's a blackout right now, we're not gonna plant it. Gonna plant it when the regs say we can plant it.
But you may have to bring in loom too though, because if it's blows away.
Well. If it blows away, I think there's plenty of weeds there to hold the dirt right now.
I haven't seen it, so, I don't know.
Right, I mean, that's the.
I don't know, I'm, I'm feeling like I'm, I'm not a landscaper.
No, 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 I, I don't, I don't.
I was just asking questions.
No, I, I don't think there's gonna be any dirt blown away right now.
Okay, I don't know.
So.
I mean, ideally, it would be great to get it planted, because we've all waited. I don't know what the zoning or the regulations say, um.
It's June fifteenth. Because I thought when it was done, Bob actually thought it was done like September time, but I thought we were pretty careful on summer, make sure we were outside the range of Portland town. Cause I thought when it was done, Bob actually thought it was done, like, September time, but I thought we were pretty careful on summer, make sure we were outside the break before we went down.
So we may have until June, we may have until June fifteenth.
Could be, could be, there, it was three different times there is.
It's a simple thing to find out.
We'll, we'll comply, we'll, we'll do what it says.
I mean, you got, you got fairly cool mornings now, but, you know, it's just, you know, it gets hot in the afternoon. But you never know what's gonna do in June. Just don't.
No. And, and the other question was the watering, cause I know, I think Mister Arcanian came back a few times and watered, like, behind a truck. But that's the other question, is how does it get watered, so that it can take root?
So, we're gonna have the landscape person come back and water it for three weeks.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna do.
So we'll just figure out what the window is.
Right.
So then, my question after that is, does that include reseeding, sort of the wider strips that come in, that aren't owned by any lot, but are part of?
The entrance?
Yeah.
So the whole entrance, not just whatever's out at the...
Right, like, the landscaper was there today, and did some work, um, but I wanna say it's between the road and the sidewalk. But you know where those two strips are, on the other side of the sidewalk?
On the right-hand side.
And left. Where the trailer used to be?
Yep.
That's one.
Yeah.
And then on the right-hand side, before the arborvitus. Right here, right here, and right here, yeah. That's the part that I'll be mowing.
And, and I'll plant here, right here.
Yeah, that's a little confusing as to exactly what that is.
Well, there's not, there's actually, uh... There's only a little piece right there, but otherwise it's not on the property, so it's just basically this.
Yeah, just those.
Okay.
Again, when you drive in, many times a day, it just looks bad. Um, and I know that these guys are doing another subdivision, so I think it would behoove everybody to have it look
Yeah.
beautiful. Cause we love our house.
Okay.
We love our house. It's good, it's wonderful.
Yay.
Most of them do.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Okay.
All right, so then, as soon as we get these two items taken care of, we'll have the as-built, Peter will come back out, do a final sign-off, and we'll get that to you. Um, the, the other thing is, um, you know, I, I'm not really sure what Mister Held wants. I would remind the board at, to review, and we can, you know, I'm not particularly thrilled that we might be coming back here. His issues with his lot are private issues. I will remind the board that on August eleventh last year, the board voted a modification to the subdivision plan, uh, allowing the removal of the, um, the, uh, wall and the implementation of that drainage. There was a vote by this board to allow that as a minor modification to the plan. Uh, it was reviewed and signed off on, uh, by, uh, your peer review folks. And, uh, obviously, when Peter went back out and did the, uh, as-built and review, there was no comment on it. So, I don't really know what Mister Held is wanting to talk about here, um, but...
You know, my, my personal feeling is, we solved the major problem. Through engineering.
We should, shouldn't be talking in those seats here. But two other things, though, getting back to the front. Was the sock and the siltation plastic that was left across the street taken out, and the DEP signed?
Uh, George is checking on the DEP sign to confirm that he could remove that. And the landscaper's, uh, scope of work that we gave him, which included working on the front, was to get that silt fence removed.
So, what do you call that?
The fence, the black silt fence.
So, I think if you're parked at the end of the road, turning on the seven-star road, that fence is across the street.
Right.
Right.
Um, and now I think it's covered by growth.
Yeah, we have to take it out.
So, that was one, and that was just me asking, whose responsibility that is to take it out. But the other one is the one that was behind, um, partly behind my lot and lot seven.
Yeah, along that back property line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think my neighbor tried to take it out, took the wood pieces out, but I think there's a lot of the plastic, or whatever the material is, underneath the ground.
The fabric.
Right, which I was out there yanking at it, and I'm like, I'm not doing this, why should I be doing this? So my question was, whose responsibility was it?
It's on Josh's scope, it was on the work in many ways.
Okay. Perfect. And, so you're gonna get back to us about the sign.
Yeah, George was talking with DEP or whoever to confirm that it was okay to remove it.
Okay.
But, that's fine on that, but I feel that we shouldn't be mentioning Mister Held's name at all, until he comes in. That was one of the rules that we got passed down by the, uh, directors.
Well, I get, and, and that's fine, but my issue is, we're here tonight. Coincidentally, we were able to address these other issues, but really, there's nothing left on his lot that hasn't been approved by the board. So, um, my client pays me to come in here and rearrange things, because that's when he's here, so, you know...
I'm in total agreement that what was done before, and approved by GZA, and we voted on everything else, but he might have something different to talk about, I don't know.
Well, I think at this point, Bobby, how, how many times do we let this happen?
Right, it was you people the first time, um, two months ago canceled, right?
No, he came, he walked, he walked into a meeting one night unannounced.
So he popped up at the meeting.
It's already, I remember that.
Okay, and then they couldn't make it, okay, so we got put off until tonight. But, you know, how many, how many times do we just keep bouncing ball back and forth?
Well, I guess the question, what's, what the jurisdiction is? You know, what, what's the jurisdiction? What is he, is he here to complain about something on the road that's not done yet? You know, that's, that's still under, I, I mean, if it's something on his lot, it's a private matter to be dealt with.
Well, I think that's what he enumerated in his letter to us. It is something that was put on the plan, and, and it, the engineers came up with a better way of doing something that solved the problem, so that the wall that was on the plan is not necessary.
That, that was voted on by this board on August eleventh.
I know it was, and it, he just...
With his approval to put the drain, right.
Correct. That's correct.
So, I mean, we, you know, I'll go along with Bob, and I'll say, no, we won't talk about it, but the reality is, we solved the problem a better way. And, I mean, what I want to do is, I wanna bring this thing to an end. I mean, obviously, if there's more issues, and more of the neighborhood up there, existing neighborhood, has at this point, we'll certainly listen to them. But the reality is, at some point in time, you have to bring it to an end. Cause this subdivision's been going, what, from the beginning now?
Crazy.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, it's, I know they've only been building, like, two houses at a time. It's hard to get these work crews now, because everybody left the industry between oh-eight and fourteen. They had none, no work at all. You can understand it, they all went on their own, so, everybody that's gonna be building, they're gonna be building two houses at a time, and it might take to build eight houses four years. So that's a long time to keep one of these things open as it is.
Let's move pretty quick, and I think that the, the issues that were brought up tonight, that we knew, you know, that Peter also mentioned, we're, we're gonna address them, so...
And, but what about the grass on the other lot? Nobody's touched that one, yeah?
Walter, did you talk to, you know, today?
You mean the one where it's growing weeds?
I don't know which one's growing weeds, I know the one that we had a problem with.
But you're gonna make up, make up stuff, I mean, nobody's sitting here, it's a private issue, the applicant...
They're, they're not, they're not doing anything.
What do you mean it's a private issue? We're, we're holding seventeen thousand dollars to reseed it. So, I just was asking what the status was, since we did this.
They did.
Jim. Walter, my question, did you talk to Mister Eric Held tonight?
No, I just got the email coming in the door, so... So, no, I didn't talk to him. But my question was very simple. We, we're holding money to reseed that lot, to get it squared away.
Which lot is it?
It's the one on the right-hand side, that the, the couple came in, and they've had issues with it time and time again, where you guys...
The second lot?
It's the second lot on the right-hand side with the...
I don't know, I don't know why, I was in...
It's gonna be the only one.
That was since last summer, and, uh, the, the bondman, I believe, is associated with the road items, not their lot.
Right.
This board is holding seventeen thousand bucks for that lot to get reseeded. And it was voted, and it's there, but my question is very simple.
So we haven't announced for the money to be released, so...
We, we didn't vote to have that.
Yeah, yeah, we did, but, can, can you just answer a simple question? You're avoiding it.
I'm not avoiding the question, I don't know the answer.
Oh, well, okay.
I, I, I said I don't know the answer.
What was the question?
That lot, has it been reseeded? What are you doing with it? You said you hadn't heard from them, but what are you doing with it?
Some, some parts of that were.
They engaged council, and, they, they engaged council, and had a conversation, and, so there you go.
Nobody's heard from them, okay. And what's your intention to, to seed it, or not seed it?
Our understanding is they're perfectly happy with it.
Okay. All right, we'll find out, we'll bring them in with Eric, I guess, and... I just wanna close the door on this. If they're happy, then we don't need to withhold the money. But, you know, it just that, uh, it seems like a pretty simple thing. Cause that lot's been brought up three or four times on grass, I mean, it's...
Let me tell you, I mean, I, I, I've said so many times, sitting here at this meetings, you know, I, I've got a lot that, I'm always planting grass.
Yeah, me too.
Always. So, you know, I mean...
But not the first time. The first time, it should catch you the second time, and then you're wrong, but...
You're on the home, you know where the yard and everything, get ready to learn how to plant grass, that's all I can tell you. Mow grass and everything else. And it's, it's, it's an ongoing thing. And if people are moving in the house, houses and lots, that they don't know anything about it, well...
But you shouldn't pay more than four hundred thousand dollars for a lot, and not at least have a good start with a brand-new lawn. So that's, that's, that's pretty good.
They've got a good start a couple of times, and if they don't water it, I can't force them to water it.
Well, the watering part is, yeah, I mean, then it should've come back up in the fall, but, I don't know, I'll, I'll make a road trip, I'll take a look.
We had a track, you know, pictures and a history of us seeding, us bringing them on, and no water to follow it, that ended the conversation with the attorney.
Yeah, we've dug holes, we've poured, we've done all kinds of stuff, but it's a real simple thing to do. I just, I was just looking for the answers, so the answers we don't know.
Walter, you're forgetting that more loom was brought down.
Yeah, I remember, and we had the, the meeting was after that.
And then the customer bought, the, the owner of the house bought grass seed that wasn't the right type.
That was before that, then you guys were down after that, and then it sat.
So George bought more grass seed, and it was replanted.
What have you done since last fall? Let's put that one...
No.
He shouldn't have to do anything, mow now, on that.
Okay, I'll check with them, I'll go down and look, and see what it is, we'll bring them both in with Eric, close the door on, okay? So, it'll be simple. They don't, if they don't have any complaints, then good, we can release them.
They haven't issued any complaints in how many months?
And, and, and don't you start one of these things either, because I don't wanna hear that.
Hey, I'm an elected official, I work for the people. If I knock on that door, they give me a complaint, it goes to this board, goddamn it, that's my job. Okay, this board's gonna hear it.
I actually, I would actually disagree with you. I don't think that's the job of a plain board member.
No, it isn't.
I think it's the job of an elected official to listen to its constituents.
To listen to its constituents.
Okay, so I'm gonna listen, okay, and they're gonna come in before a board for a vote, if necessary. If they're happy, then they can just send a note to the board. Okay, but I asked a very simple question, and I get pushback on that time and time again.
I, I, the answer is, I don't know, that, that's not pushback, that's a legitimate answer, you may make something up, I'm not gonna make anything up, I'm gonna say, I don't have any answer.
I don't know is great. I got it. So that requires further research. That's perfect, thank you, it's, okay, okay, I figured somebody else would know.
We've never asked that question of any, any lot in this town, whether they like the grass or not.
Have they complained to us?
Yeah, they did. A lot, not, not since twenty sixteen, I don't think, but certainly in fifteen, there was a lot.
No, not after they quit watering their lawn. So, um...
A lot of people do in the...
I guess I was, i- if Mister Held is still coming in, we'd like to know when that's gonna be, and to make sure that we're available.
You wanna put him on the high school?
I'm getting to the point where I'll give him one more chance. I'll send him an email.
Okay.
And that's it. Because if he doesn't show up, the next meeting is gonna be on the twenty-first, okay? And if he doesn't show up, that's it. I'm not gonna keep carrying this thing. I know what the issue is, we solved the issue. There is no issue.
Are these, are these meetings televised?
Yes.
Well, we're live on TV right now.
Live, okay, we're behind you.
Real time?
Real time.
I don't know, we real time tonight?
Just turn around, what?
You're right up there. Smile.
I do have one other question about the entrance. Um, and I don't think this is in the rules and regulations of the cul-de-sac or subdivision things. Is there, does Groveland require any kind of, like, signage, or, you know, I, I drive by other cul-de-sacs in Groveland, and there's fancy things that say, for instance, the fairways or something. Do we require anything? Do you guys require anything?
Well, years, years, years ago, when there was about five major subdivisions built in the town, they all had signs out front. What happened was, over the years, they were all made out of wood. They all rotted away.
I require the street signs, and children playing signs, and...
The subdivision, the homeowners' association could put one up, right? Could they not?
Yeah, they can put it, put it up.
If you wanna maintain it, if you wanna maintain it.
No, I'm just wondering if there are...
Turn a DEP sign around and put Groveland fair...
That's what I'm wondering, is if there are requirements or not.
No requirements.
No, none, none.
Nope. Just the children playing signs and the street sign.
Street sign.
Do we need a children's playing sign?
If, if it's required, it's in the memorandum, but those are the type of signs we would require.
But no, you don't, and this is subdivision, but if it did require, according to the regs, that's one of the signs, that's an example of a sign. Like, stop signs, children's play sign, streets sign.
Okay.
All right, it depends on the developer, the contractor. Larry Kelly, Kendall Construction, three places in town, he put a rock, uh, facade, and then he had a sign up here, too.
Yeah?
That was all part of the builder and the, uh...
No, I was, I was only asking the question, so I can go back and send an email to the person who's, um, chairing the homeowners' association, which is not me, just to say, if, is it, if it's required, if it's not required, that's all. Okay.
Just the street sign, and, uh, children playing, or something.
I mean, it's good if you get, if you meet, and, and you all work together in there, I mean, you know, you can make it what you want it to be.
Right.
And we want you to do that. But, you know, it's, at this point, it is coming to an end, what the developer has to do.
No, and, and we know that. I think it's just a matter of, with the money that we already have in the account,
Mm-hmm.
again, this is what we're gonna do with it, but we just wanted the grass up till, you know, up to a certain standard, to take it over from that. That's all.
Okay.
Which we got answers, so...
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see what else we got. Okay. Is Costa, what is it, Constantine Billis here?
No, they're coming on the twenty-first.
Thank you.
You got something, too?
I'm on the bottom.
Bottom.
Okay.
Yep.
Jeez.
Okay. All right, next up is Patty Rogers, eight thirty-three Salem Street.
The reason I'm here is, I just, um, want your opinion. Eight thirty-three Salem Street is commercial, zoned, and is it feasible to, because it only goes thirty feet beyond the property line to the next person's house, into their property. So my question is, would it be feasible to change it to business residential instead of commercial? It is an estate, and, um...
It's feasible.
It's, um...
It's like one lot.
We're Dick Shaka, we're...
Yeah.
And, um, it's industrial zone now, which means you can have industry, you can have, you know, business, retail business.
Why would you wanna change it?
Because, well, you tell them.
Well, hypothetically, we don't know what we're gonna do with the property.
Yeah.
And when, initially, when we bought the house, it was residential. At some point, somebody changed it.
Right.
So, there's one house there with two hundred and fifty feet frontage, we don't know what we're gonna do with it. But having it stay commercial, um, is very limited as to what you can do with the property.
Is it the cell towers, though?
Yep.
Okay, so that would have to, is that in that piece?
The whole thing is one, where the needsmen drew the, you know...
So, you can change it, you can petition the change, and if it's right, if you're right on the edge, you'd be, like, sliding down one, is that what you're telling me, basically?
Exactly.
Okay, so you could...
Except for one house, we would probably, we have two, I haven't talked to anybody, I thought I'd come here first.
Yeah.
We own property behind one other person's house, um, so I would probably have to talk to her.
So what would you wanna...
I don't know what I'm doing.
So why would you wanna bring it out? I mean, it's, cause you're industrial, you get the...
I think, I think the question gets, gets into, what do you get the higher price for it today? I think, I think the question gets, gets into, what do you get the higher price for it today?
Is that where you're, you're thinking about putting some houses in next year, maybe someday, so, oh, okay, so that makes sense. So, so, yeah, you, yes, you can do that, yes, you can petition, yes, it has to go to town meeting on a change, okay, typically, we, I think I've only seen once or twice that happened for one individual lot. Usually do it as a bank.
Well, what you'd have to do is you'd have to adjust the line, and what you'd do is you put a line over, it's almost like it's, it's easier to send it residential, cause it's right next to a residential zone.
Right. Right. That's, that's what it is, so incorporate it into the residential zone, but it still requires a town meeting, an article, a map.
Two thirds vote.
Yeah, so it, certainly to anybody, it's a lot of lightweight.
Does she have two hundred feet frontage and two hundred feet deep at least?
Two fifty, yes, it's got that in there.
Two hundred forty nine feet.
So, basically, we're just taking the existing residential zone and just sliding it down to incorporate your lot, basically, is what it was, put it back where it was.
Okay, so, so you wouldn't even put it business, you would just change it to residential?
Well, that's.
You're gonna build on it, otherwise.
That's, that's, that's a question, I mean, you know, it's probably.
What are you gonna do?
It's probably worth talking to the board of selectmen as well on this one, because, you know, I mean, they're, they're, they're kinda up in arms at this point about, you know.
I can't even think of what you want. Zone changes?
Well, it's just simply with the town buying industrial land, uh, off the center street, and then the state coming in and buying a good part of the industrial land. You know, behind Salem Street, you know, all the way to Georgetown line.
Yeah.
You need to remember, if you do sell land.
You know, diminishing returns.
Or build a subdivision later on, you need to have at least a fifty foot right of way through and put a road into the houses you're selling, if they're not.
Yeah. The trick for you is gonna be that tower.
I know.
If you switch that out to residential, either A, that could get grandfathered, or B, might have to come down.
I can't have it come down, cause I have a lease with them.
Okay, so then you'd have to carve off that parcel.
That become, that has to be carved out, cause that's, that becomes pre-existing non-conforming.
Conformance, right.
And, and those things, I think they carry more weight than something that's zoned.
Yeah.
Because for a simple reason, they can, they, if they change at all, all they have to do is change a little bit to the better, as a use. So, those things last forever and ever and ever.
So, but, just the process earmark a year. So, figure out what you wanna do first, and then figure out the timeline.
Okay, so you guys can't do a zoning, uh, planning for a change?
Yes, it's a, it's a.
We can, what we, what we generally like to do in a case like this is think through what's known as initiative petition. In other words, we might draw up the article.
Okay.
But we would then give you the article with a whole bunch of lines on it, and you may wanna check with the clerk, the town clerk. To find out, I believe, when someone's running for office, I think there was, what, thirty-five signatures.
Oh.
So, we, you know, I kinda go in that direction and say, you get at least that.
But you're only ten percent. But we can sponsor the article, so that, you could write to us to sponsor the article, the selectmen, actually, any board could sponsor it, um, going through. My, my question to you is, you gotta figure out what you wanna do first, so you know which direction to go in, and, because you really have to identify that parcel too. If you're gonna carve off that tower, you have to have some engineering work done and some other stuff. So, yes, it can be done, yes, you can start here, okay, it does have to go to town meeting. It is gonna take you, if you plan on a year from the time you start, to get through the hearing and the article and the town meeting and the all set, okay?
Okay, um, my other question is, if we do a, um, business residential, will I still have to carve off the side?
Same process, yeah, um.
Let me, let me give you a little history, uh, along that street.
Mm-hmm.
Number of years back, uh, John Susie and, what's his name, Ryan, came in, they wanted to rezone from basically Susie's land all the way to Dick Shaka at that point, and take it back. I believe it started at two hundred and fifty feet from the center line of the road, but, uh, they wanted to go five hundred feet. And it went to, we, we wrote the article, gave it to them, they got the signatures, and it went, and it got defeated.
They were turning it to what?
Uh, residential.
Okay.
And it was, it got defeated, my, my honest opinion of, of it was, at that point, a lot of people that felt that industrial area was never gonna work anyhow, they just, they just felt like, well, leave it industrial, nothing ever, nothing will happen.
I, I don't like that.
If you look at the commercial. Jim, doesn't, isn't cell tow, cell tower by law, that, isn't that we'll take in the RB district too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so, yes, to answer your question.
Actually, we got one, oh, yeah.
We got one here, so.
Yeah, 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 we got one out here, we got one.
I requested residential business, I, I wouldn't have to go for, that's what I was thinking, residential business.
Uh-huh. You're covered.
No, no, it's, no, don't, don't confuse that RB, I mean, the RA, B, and C is residential, period. Business is business, B.
Yeah, but you're in the.
Industrial is I, industrial.
You're in the industrial zone right now, so, so she'd be switching that parcel from industrial zone to, to RB, yeah, that'd be a small parcel, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, residential business, well, if you change it to business, it can also do residential.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so that's, that's what she's talking about, the RB, but it'd be the only parcel out there.
Not, not RB.
Yeah, but just business.
But it would be the only parcel.
It's B, it would be B, it'd be business.
But it's the only parcel out there.
So, how could I, I can't just.
Well, I, I, no, because you can't merge it, because at that point, it becomes, you know, spot zoning.
You can't merge it. Right. Right, so you can't do that.
Yeah, so I can't do that.
Yeah, I mean, if you change it to B, you'd have to go all the way down the street.
So, ain't gonna work.
I don't really wanna mess with anyone else's property, that's not my intent.
It's easier for us to design a line that stops, you know, by, further down by the Georgetown line and just come over a certain amount, we'd, we'd have to figure that out.
Slide up the residential.
And come up.
Carve off, leave that tower into the industrial with the, with the easement to pass, and you could.
Oh, I could do that?
No, because the, the, if you go residential and you pull the line over.
It's not, she's on the line.
Cell tower, it's the cell tower was.
No, she's on the line, so, so you pull it up, so, so the tower would actually stay in the industrial zone.
No, it's just the opposite.
It's just the opposite, yeah, but, like I said, it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Is the opposite, oh. Still gotta get the access then, too.
Well, they have the access, they got a right to pass and repass, if you look into the deed of that property, that's what they have.
Yeah. Oh, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's not.
So, you get some homework.
It's, it's something you gotta think about first, now, the other thing I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, ask you to do, okay, and that is to find two relatives. Okay, one who's residential would give you a pretty good idea of what a lot is worth and how many lots might be, how many acres is that?
Eight.
Eight acres.
Well, probably one is not usable because of the cell tower.
Cell tower, so we got seven, and the road sometimes takes up to that, an acre, just going in for dog legs.
And the house.
You might get six houses, six house lots out, it's, and it, it, the further back it goes, I think that's a hundred and fifty feet from the road, it's still thirty. Well, I'm not sure though, it could be that it's coming down the center line, everything over that center line is one acre, so you might have six, six lots.
Um, the way it's owned right now, but if you change residential, I don't know, but I did look into it, it's only, um, thirty thousand square feet right now, but I can't build houses on it, cause it's commercial.
Right.
The other thing is, if you talk to someone who sells lots for industry or in business.
I just thought I would, you know, I'm trying to.
You gotta find somebody that does that, and, and, you know, kinda get a, an idea. One of the problems right now, it's going on in the business world, I mean, it's, it was announced, I think about two and a half weeks ago on CNBC. They're gonna close about a quarter of the malls in this country. Because people are shopping online.
Makes sense.
And we've got an awful lot of business properties in this town now that are empty. It still has, it still hasn't come back, so, the real question in my mind is, okay, of, of, of all the businesses you can think of, okay, what's gonna absolutely stay and need a store, okay, and, and then what might downsize to the point where, instead of having one every five miles, they have one every ten miles, you know, the big box stores. Just, just don't know what this, the landscape's gonna end up looking like, i- in the future, because of everybody going on amazon.com, and then, and everything comes to you, uh, via UPS.
Yep, UPS store.
And, and next, the, the little flying helicopters, you know.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's a changing world, I, I can tell you.
Well, I, I just wanted to, to see what my options were.
Yes, and, and I want you to think as much as, you, you got questions, ask.
But I guess my question is, if I decide to do this, um, I have an idea of how to do it, but if I petition, and they have a special town meeting in the fall, you don't think I can get it done by then?
Which fall, this fall?
This fall, and I doubt it, I doubt that very much.
You gotta advertise it, hearing, blah, blah.
Okay.
It's, takes a bit.
Have, have you talked to any of the people on the board of selectmen all about this at all, yet nothing, okay, if they're watching tonight, now they know. If not, I mean, I'm willing to go with you, and, you know, we'll sit and talk.
Well, no, I don't have a problem going, but I don't wanna start something that it's just hypothetical, that's why I.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, you have to have a plan first.
Yeah.
Right.
I know, I know.
Cause what happens if you go the other way?
I know Dick had talked to me about, you know, trying to do some sort of a, um, what the hell they call those things, where it's an assisted living.
Right.
You know, operation, and, uh, I, I.
That would be nice, if you're not.
Yeah, you know, I never got to them in, in time, but there's a thing called Bright House, and they have one down, I think it's Danvers. I'm not sure where the lines are down there, but it's quite, quite a complex, um, we have two over fifty-five operations in this town, and they bring us an awful lot of tax money. Between the two of them, it's like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they're clean as a whistle, they take care of everything within them. And I thought that thing with assisted living was, you know, same, same thing.
I know, we thought of like, uh, um, Sarah's Place or something like that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That helped with my mom a lot.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't know, with no sewer on Salem.
Yeah, that's another problem, you know, I mean, you know, we get these, we get these ideas and, we get these ideas in Groveland, and then all of a sudden, it's like, no sewer.
You know. I'm, I'm, we're clear, I know what's going on. Yep.
That's a big need, but we got so many places in this town, no water either, you know, so.
Oh, yeah. Alright.
Well, I won't waste your time, I just.
No, no, I'm, I'm glad you came in, at least we know what you'd like to do, and, uh.